Good evening, Waverly. Thank you for joining us on this Monday, February 3, for a regular meeting of the City Council in the city of Waverly, Iowa. It is 7:00, and this meeting is called to order. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, City Council. The City Clerk has prepared for you an agenda to be proposed for tonight. Is there a motion?
I will move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. Also prepared for you and presented in advance are the minutes from January 20th, January 25th, the budget study session, and the January 27th study session. Can I have a motion to approve as presented?
I move approval of the minutes as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Oh, man. We'll give that to Jen. Any discussion? This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If you're keeping a score at home, it appears that we are one short, but not true. Councilperson Jones is joining us telephonically, and he is on Carla's cell, but will transfer to the speakerphone when that's possible. Also with us tonight are guest council peoples. So I'll call on Councilperson Dranko to make an explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have invited three exceptional Whartburg students to be our guest council people for the month of February. We will be rotating members, so each one of them will have a chance to be up here at the dais, while the other two can listen and make notes and decide whether they did a good job or not. So I'd like to introduce tonight. We have Katie from New Hampton, who's a biochemistry major. Katie. And Hannah from Fergus Falls, who is a political science and criminal justice major and actually spent, what was it, six months as a student member of the City Council in Fergus Falls.
In high school, yeah.
In high school, yeah. So she's very experienced in all of our council stuff. We'll see what things we do better or worse than they do in Fergus Falls. And then actually sitting in the seat tonight is Seth Butler, who is from Hills Canyon, Oregon. He's a political science and business administration major and also is a former, and maybe again will be, employee with the leisure services department. So he knows all kinds of things about how the city works. So, welcome Seth.
Welcome, all three of you. Thank you for being here. Let's move on to item G. This is the consent calendar. Friends, you have seven pieces in front of you. Can I? Oh, I skipped the public comments. A Freudian slip, no doubt. Thank you. Item F, public comments for anything that is not on the agenda. If you have anything to speak to that is not currently on the agenda, please rise now, so I know that I can call on you. I see no one rising. That takes us to G, the consent calendar. You have seven items in front of you. I would accept a motion.
I will move approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? I hear none. You appear ready to vote. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. That passed unanimously. Item H. A presentation by Slingshot and Bolton and Menck to provide us with an update regarding the water building concepts. That is the old power plant. While you're fussing with that, let's have you give your introductions.
Sure thing. Glad to be back. Dan Drenel is Slingshot Architecture. And I have Ben from my office, and then Nate and Adrian from Bolton Menck as well. So, tonight, great to see a lot of your faces again. Thank you for participating, several of you, in the stakeholder meeting that we had together several weeks ago. Today is kind of a couple steps past that, so we took into account that time together, input that we gathered for possible reuses of the power plant, and in thinking of like what uses, what needs are in the community that the building could fulfill. Tonight, what you'll see is kind of halfway through our work, before we get, so kind of a draft package of where we're starting to study. We put some visuals together for types of spaces, kind of a level of finish of the building to kind of inspire future development teams. And also, we're, from the architecture perspective, really important to really get to scale. So Ben will talk about this, but the goal and what he's sharing is we're using experience from other successful developments as far as like when we talk about, could a restaurant go in here? Could a multipurpose space go in here? Could micro retail go in here? We're using best practices that we've developed and seen in other projects, and getting that to scale as far as a successful space. The building in general is quite big from the standpoint of a single user would probably be pretty hard to find for it, but blending uses could make for a really active development and a really active public use, you know, throughout the week, throughout the weekend, is kind of the goal that we've been targeting. So from there, I'll just keep tap dancing here a little bit. Nate's going to jump in and talk about how, really getting into the meat of the proposal, you know, the goal of the whole process that we're going through right now is to think kind of backwards and say, here, how can we envision what a successful redevelopment of this property could be? And then with that in mind, how can we address the structural needs of the building? So that it sets up well for that and also maintains the building in place, at least the main pieces that, you know, really are part of the river wall and dam. So Nate will jump in and talk about, from a landscape architect perspective, about some of the ideas that we have about activating the site outside of the building and how those spaces interact. And then Adrian will jump in and get into the structural approach. You're almost there. If you're all looking at our first slide, I can kind of talk over that while he gets it going for everybody else. So on there, we have the timeline that we started with in the beginning. Like I said, we're kind of halfway through this scope of work in a draft package. So that solid yellow line is the scope of work that we're doing, and it's really with the mindset of setting up for finding a future development partner and doing structural modifications to this building to, or at least analyzing that and knowing what that costs, so you can all make informed decisions about how to work on this building or how to preserve it. So with that said, if you look, we've done, we brought forward, or we had the stakeholder engagement together that I referenced. We also did building and site investigation that day when we were here in town. We put together some preliminary stabilization options with structural input, and now we're at kind of a draft package, if you want to hit that next one. So these are some diagrams, just at a high level, where we're talking about, and really facts that we've collected from all of you and the stakeholder group, about connectivity options for the building, kind of how the trail network works around the building, how we could potentially spill out of the building. And particularly highlighted that the parking lot between City Hall and the building is a really great opportunity for public space and for entry to this building in both kind of an inside-outside experience. So whether that be a part of a restaurant or a cafe, it's just a really great opportunity for how everything is set up here. The parking could really be offsetted or even maintained at that same level by strifing the street a little differently than it is today. But there's some other opportunities we'll talk about, too. So that's the framework of our, thanks for giving me a little extra time. I'll hand it over to Ben, we'll talk about the building a little bit. But please just jump in with any questions as we go. Happy to answer that. We're here for you guys tonight.
So the next couple diagrams or sheets are really showing like what can the city develop and what's that potential to bring developers in? Like how does that get built out for a future use that could come in? Makes it a little bit easier. So we're really showing like restrooms, mechanical space and entry on this kind of slide and the next, if you go over. Just two different potential layouts on how we could build this space out, so it makes it a little bit more enticing for a developer to come in. They already have a couple of those amenities to work off of. Next one. A couple thoughts here on concepts. How could we build this out? What does that look like? Kind of engaging with the exterior, taking use of the unique areas within the building already. And after some of that stakeholder engagement, what kind of uses work well for the city of Waverly? So restaurant seems to be a big thing, I think that we found through stakeholder engagement, but also just use what's been proven in other projects of similar scales. So in this scheme, we've kind of seen the restaurant on the west side, taking use of the views of the river. The turbine room to the northwest there. Speakeasy kind of just shown above in the attic space, if you look kind of to the west there. And then a larger recreation space for maybe something like duck pen bowling, just kind of like a half-scale bowling, if you haven't heard of it, or like arcade space. Something, if you've been to like Smash Park before, kind of a similar concept of, something that could be family-friendly, could attract people in, and when it's nicer outside, could be used outdoors as well. Here's just some different arrangement, kind of a restaurant using a larger seating area in the older garage space, the double-height area. Could be overflow seating or some sort of mixed event use area when the restaurant doesn't need it. Some co-working area or maybe micro retail. How can we bring in maybe some smaller-scale tenants or people who have an idea they need a space but don't want to pay for like a larger office space? Coffee shop could be a possibility. Small scale that could serve the building and also the patio, the outdoor space. Something to bring people to the site. They get coffee, taking the views of the river. Here's just some thoughts on what that could look like, some of the spaces that we've seen be successful before. Some spaces we like for outdoor areas or arcade spaces and restaurants. Just a couple of color ideas, what that might look like. Really using the existing fabric of the building, highlighting that in the use that we might see go in there.
Questions for us so far? We'll hand over to the site team.
Hi, I'm Nate Weidel. Good to be here tonight. So I'm going to take you from inside of the building, starting just around the building envelope, and describe a little bit of what you're seeing just outside the building and how these connections to the different spaces in the building flow out. Starting on the north side of the building, where Ben talked about some of the restaurant space. Those spaces in this concept here spill right out onto open patio space. Just immediately to the north, we have approximately three patio spaces shown that would total out to be about space for 50 people to sit. So thinking about like dining tables, maybe even some booth-type seating outdoors. But then that space spills out into a larger open lawn space, which currently is parking lot. And based on, you know, the idea of pulling some of those parking stalls and finding a different arrangement for that in the existing parking lot, but then also on the street. I think we heard from the committee that the parking lot to the north of the building could be better used as outdoor amenity space. So what we're showing here is an open lawn space with what could be a stage structure that overlooks the river. We're thinking about 80 people could potentially fit in that open lawn space. But then it could also be a flexible space where you can have some tents out there during events and really just use that as a flexible space as well. We are also showing an overlook space, so I think the best way to do this might just be to get up here and point. I'm going to try that. You guys tell me if this doesn't work very well. So, yep. So open there, overlook space there. Yep, exactly. And then that's just outside to the north of the turbine building. So we also have the existing structure there that used to have the doors that would slide down and close. Outside of that turbine building, there's some really good opportunity there to use that as an overhead structure, kind of an amenity to the site. So we think that could be pretty cool. But I think that pretty much covers this space, although we are showing some structures in here that could show as like gateways or monuments into this space and really just help to draw people off of the First Street northeast and out of that parking lot over into this really pedestrian-centric space. And then moving from there, we're showing just some pedestrian connections here. These are just these yellow dashed lines to show you how pedestrian circulation could flow through the space. But then the north, up on the north here, what we're seeing here is a potential trail connection out to the east, which will then connect up to your regional trail. And then on First Street northeast and First Avenue northeast, we're showing some parallel parking stalls, which are currently there. But what we're proposing is that we would narrow the street up just a bit so that we can have a little bit better pedestrian space between the power plant building and the parking edge. And then also proposing some pedestrian bumpouts to reduce the crossing distance from the power plant side to the parking lot side. And then I'll move to the south. So now along the south side, this was flexible space and also recreation space in the building here. But what we're showing on the south side here is a slightly expanded paved area. It's paved in there right now, but it's got a pretty good slope to it. We propose doing some things to make that feel a little more comfortable for pedestrians to be in, and then that can work really well as an outdoor flex space. You know, you've got some extra tents out there or something for an event that you wanted to do something there. And then showing a wider connection to what is the existing sidewalk and patio space in between the power plant and the building to the south. So just having a wider connection there, just a more significant connection. Okay, and then the last thing is on the west side of the building, we're going to turn our attention here to what was the old tail race exit there. So right now, this is all just filled in with water, but part of the structural improvements, and Adrian will get into this a little bit, but part of the structural improvements that we are proposing would include the installation of a copper dam on the south side here. And this is just going to, we think, provide a really good opportunity to get river access off of the existing sidewalk, to get some river access for people, whether that's fishing or whether that's just to access the water. We are looking at doing like some stacked limestone outcropping and you can step down to the water's edge there. And then we're showing the trail connection off of the new bridge here. We can look at potentially having some, I do that. This is a touch. Anyway, so yeah, just along the edge of the building here, looking at doing a elevated structure or platform to pull people off of the bridge here and directly immediately down into the space. And then the ability to also then wrap that trail around the exterior of the building this way as well. Ultimately, what that would do for you is you could have a nice pedestrian route here without necessarily walking down First Street. Okay, so then we can jump. We can come back if there are questions, too, but we can jump to the next slide here. This is just some character imagery that we have shared with the steering committee as well as city staff. I will say that the top-left image people have really gravitated towards, you know, the ability to provide some pedestrian space. It really just feels like an outdoor room. It's really the intent with some of these structures and really just to elevate the feel of the space for pedestrians. Okay, next. And then just looking at just different ways that we can create space with paving patterns, different, you know, colored concrete, pavers, those sorts of things. And then also looking at areas or spaces within this whole outdoor space that can be used for things other than just outdoor dining. So the one on the top right is kind of nice. It's just an outdoor fire pit area where people can gather. So we have the ability to do those kinds of spaces as well. Okay, next. And then just some different furnishings options, and again, different ways for people to gather. We have some more fire pit examples up on the top right. That's actually the, that's from the Surly Brewing Company. A few of these images actually are, but they just have some really nice spaces for just being in the outdoor environment. Okay, next. I think that's it. So any questions on any of that while we're here?
This might be kind of a technical question, but a couple slides back, when you had pedestrian trail coming off of the new bridge along the river?
Yes.
It was my understanding of the DOT does not allow any kind of pedestrian connection onto the bridge.
Okay.
That's what I've been told, at least, because we had been working on some kind of connection over on the west side of the bridge to connect that pedestrian trail onto the bridge. Right now, it cuts between a couple of buildings and you stop like all that. And one of the reasons why we were having difficulty in planning for that was that the DOT was skeptical about allowing the trail to connect onto the bridge.
Okay. Is this a, maybe we can get into some of the more of the details, maybe look at the plan, if it's a width issue or what it is.
I have no idea what the issue was.
Okay, that's a good note. We'll make sure that we chase that one down.
The DOT likes to tell us that we can't do things.
Yep. Okay, that's good. Anything else?
So that copper dam that we have there, that kind of, I really like the idea of this access to the river, but how much of that is just necessary to stabilize the concrete wall there?
That's a really great transition.
Thank you, thank you very much. Almost hit my point there.
We designed it that way. Okay. Do you want to go back to?
Oh, yeah, you're there already. That's a good answer. So I think the, well, so I guess, you know, now that you've seen all the great pictures of what this could be, you know, it's up to me to just kind of bring it back to reality and what it is, you know, now, and how do we start to move towards what this space could be? So your question about the copper dam, and obviously we're showing, you know, fillings. So I guess, maybe make sure everybody's oriented with the building correctly first. The part that kind of juts out into the river right now, that's the old turbine building, right? Just for, in case people are listening at home, too, and kind of wondering what they're looking at. They also call that the pen stock. Sometimes you'll hear that term, where they had the turbines and where the water flowed through the turbines to create power. That building is the part, so of the, you know, from the previous studies and from our own review also, that's the part where the, I'll call it the foundation or the seawall or basement of the building is, has been damaged and eroded over time, where the concrete's deteriorated there. And so that's the part that really needs repaired. The other seawalls do also need repairs, just to stabilize those. So like the, everything that kind of faces the river out there is in need of repair. What we're showing here, I guess, was as we kind of looked at that concept, you know, one of that early concept that had been prepared, you know, by others was to just fill the inside of that void space where the turbines were with flowable concrete, essentially. The issue with that is it doesn't really stabilize the walls that are holding up the building. In fact, it adds more pressure during construction to do that. So what you really need to do is probably kind of sandwich those walls to make sure that they stay in place, essentially. And so as we looked at doing that, really the first thing is to get you a space, get a space to actually work and to, you know, form against the wall, to build it for that concrete, against the existing walls. And downstream side, not as challenging, right? Because the water level's very low. The upstream side gets to be fairly challenging, right? Because the water, because the water depth up there. So you have to de-water essentially on the upstream side. At some point in the past, there had been slide gates that were installed there. Those are no longer functional, it sounds like. We can go back and look at those and see if we can make those functional, but if you're trying to picture like you put these stop logs in that holds the water back and there's leak, you know, there's water leaking past, so you're turning that, people down there forming walls, just an unsafe condition probably wouldn't work in this current configuration or at least in this current condition. So then we started looking at, well, if we're going to build a copper dam to be able to do this work, then, you know, that curved portion on the upstream side, really that's kind of where that copper dam could be is, is basically take up that whole space up there. If we're going to build a copper dam, then we just leave it in and build the deck space out there, kind of build out into the river. So, I mean, there could be cheaper options of building a copper dam that's shorter or closer to the building itself. But really, in this configuration, you know, you're paying so much to put the copper dam in the first place, why not get the benefit of it, you know, in the long term to be able to build out the deck? And so that's kind of what we're showing, is that. On the, you know, the downstream side, it's a little bit easier. We can, you know, make a much lower copper dam because the water's so low down there and do all our work pretty much right because of the building there. One thing I will say is that as we were looking at this, too, we looked at soil borings or the geologic conditions surrounding the building, and I'm sure somebody is familiar with like the bridges going in right now. There's a karst topography, they call it, in Waverly, so basically underground caverns. Those exist and are quite variable in this area. And so the next step really for us would be to do a couple of things. Number one, probably get some more geotechnical data in the exact location, because nobody's looked at that exact location right now about, you know, where we put these foundations for a copper dam or walls and see what we've got right below us. You know, those things we saw nearby, where there could be, you know, caverns underneath that that were, you know, 10 feet high with maybe just a four-foot thick rock ceiling on them. So you can imagine we're trying to build a foundation over an underground cave, essentially. And it doesn't make our structural engineers real comfortable to just build right on top of that. So one thing to do would be to get more data on the geotechnical side to have a good picture of what's going on down there. I think they did the exact same thing with the bridge, right? Where they designed some foundations and they went and drilled exactly where those foundations go so they could know exactly what they're dealing with. I think that's what we have to do here, too. You could literally move over five feet and get a completely different condition if you just happened to miss the cavern. And then the other side is that we wouldn't want to do anything that increases the flood height. Or if we do increase the flood height, then we'd want to do it a very small amount and then do a very minor map revision to change our flood insurance rate maps. So we do kind of those two things at the same time. Go and look at geotech, get some more foundation. Go and look at geotech, get some more foundation designs that are more rooted in reality, and then also do a hydraulic analysis to make sure we don't raise in the flood height.
That was gonna be my question is, do we run into building into the river, any issues with like Corps of Engineers or DNR in terms of messing with the river flow?
Right. So there's a couple of things you'd think about when you come to those and the permitting side of it. So Corps of Engineers, oddly enough, you think of them as regulating flood things, but in reality, they regulate the environmental side through the Section 404 process of the Clean Water Act. And so they're gonna be looking at endangered species, those kind of things. So I know there's also been some mussel studies. So endangered mussels exist in this area of the river, which you're probably familiar. There have been some studies done already. So the next phase would be to look at what studies have done already and then talk to the Corps of Engineers and others. Also, if you have Special Wildlife Service and DNR will have some input and see what they would require us to do. So those mussel issues and endangered species issues, usually you can get away, you know, you can get through that process either by, you know, mitigation of the impact you have or finding that you don't really have any impacts. The other side, the flood side is regulated by FEMA and the Iowa DNR through basically establishing those regulatory flood heights. So they regulate to the 100-year flood height. You, you know, they say, here's what we determine the flood height to be. You need to build your building at least one foot above that. Your lowest opening on your building has to be one foot above that. So you have maps that FEMA puts out maps that show those flood heights. So what we are showing right now, we're hoping, would not actually increase the flood height because we're in what's called the, like an area of non-conveyance because of the building that already juts out there. Basically, you can kind of take a triangle and go up there, usually three, for whatever comes out, you can go three distances upstream and downstream and assume that that's an area that does not really convey floodwater, doesn't add, doesn't, you know, convey floodwater because of that obstruction. So what we're showing probably will work, but we need to do more detailed hydraulic analysis to make sure. My experience is that something like this, you know, could be in an area where it's not going to increase the flood height, but, you know, depending on the exact configuration we come up with, maybe there's a slight increase of like, you know, a hundredth of what I say is slight, like very slight, and the regulatory limit is zero. So it could be that we just need to do a map revision, and I think that would be possible in this case.
I heard you say it needs repair. That sounds like a diagnosis. I'm kind of interested in the prognosis. Is it about to fall into the river? It could last 100 years?
Yeah.
Where are we at?
Yeah, we talked about that quite a bit actually with our structural team and our designers and it's been there for a long time. Yeah, some of the concrete that's there is starting to get, starting to soften essentially, especially right where, the worst part is always right where the water hits it, right? So like the water line is. So that gets the freeze thaw right in that area. Most of the rest of it, the parts that's been continuous underwater is just fine. So there are parts of it that are deteriorating. Is it going to fall in tomorrow? If I had to guess, and again, no guarantees on anything in life, right? But if we had to say, is it going to fall in tomorrow? No. Is it going to fall in two years from now? Probably not barring some catastrophic event, you know. 10 years, you know, probably not still. In the next 50 years, yeah, you're going to probably want to do something. So isn't immediate issue like imminent danger? We think no. So, but again, no guarantees on life, right?
Counsel, any other questions or discussion?
Well, I always have to keep coming back yet and these are, you know, wonderful concepts. I really like them. And I like the way that the bank along the river is made use of. We don't make use of our river nearly as much as we should. But it always comes down to a cost-benefit analysis, you know? Is this something that is worth the cost to put all of these improvements into the building, hoping that we will have tenants or a developer or somewhere, I assume who will be purchasing the building? I don't think the city wants to be a landlord, you know, but I hate to put that money into the building and find out that we don't have anyone who's willing to make use of the building. And, you know, then the second thing is, is it, would it be better to demolish the building and have a bare lot for someone to build whatever they wanted to build on that building? And I know demolishing the building is not an inexpensive prospect either. Certainly, if we can make use of a current, very unique building, I would much rather do that even if it was somewhat more expensive than demolishing the building. But it just seems to me that we've got so many unanswered questions here before we put a ton of money into, you know, putting in the walls and all of that kind of stuff. Is this the road that we really want to go down?
Well, that's what we've talked about with Adrian and the group is, you know, you're looking more at the exterior function of this.
Right.
Well, the interior concepts are nice. We've talked about it. That will not be us. That will be a developer, that will be a partner that will actually come in and determine how they want to set up the internal part of this, how they want to get that ready. Our goal from the start was getting this prepared from the exterior out, the top pointing, the window replacement, the roof that leaks, the raccoon holes that exist in the foundation, whatever it is, plug that up, get that figured out, look at the space outside of it. So we are not going to develop the inside. And I don't think we'd go forward without knowing what is the cost of this?
Yeah.
What are the borings show us? That's why we're not rushing forward with anything. We could drop $2 million into tomorrow and might be okay, might work, I don't know, may not. That's why we did the concepting here. We'll do the borings if you want to move forward. We will tiptoe through this. This is not a one-year project. This may be a five-year project. It may be more, it may be less. We would develop grant funding from all different kinds of sources we can. There's a lot of big funding for things like this, getting this redevelopment done and the impact it has on the region. Destination Iowa grants are for these kind of things. So our goal is not to bring you this, say, you know what, we're going to sink $5 million into this. It's to let you be aware of what it's going to look like, how can we move forward, what's the next step? And I think we're looking at geotechnical data to even start to see, can we do the north part of this versus the south part of it? So it's a multi-step process going forward. It's not just taking a million five and patching the concrete and thinking that's pretty good, we'll just leave it, but...
Right.
So that's what we're here tonight for is just to give an update. This is what we've seen, some of the things you may or may not like. How do we move forward? What is that next step? And we'll kind of lean to Bolton and Mink slingshot to kind of let us know what does that look like if you want to move forward?
Yeah, I mean, I'm very impressed. I think that was my question is, it sounds like what you're proposing is that we prepare the building for someone to develop the interior and we make the exterior attractive. And it might be in phases because who knows how much it's going to cost. The other thing that I think is intriguing is when we looked at the MSA maps for where the Nestle Bridge would go once it is replaced, they actually had it more south so it would go into Coleman Park on the north edge, which I think really would fit with something like this. You know, you don't have to then go through the residential area to hit the trail system to go west. You just have a nice loop, you know, past the brewery, past Four Queens. I mean, it's a really nice, past the theater. It's a really nice downtown destination. I just keep thinking of how much it's going to cost, but I think, you know, you all obviously have experience in marketing this sort of project to developers. You know, over the years, various developers have come looked at it and nobody has bit, probably because it needed a ton of work to be structurally sound. But I think if you all think there's a market for this, that if we fixed it up, we could get, you know, someone with experience who's successful in commercial development, then I'd be all for it. I mean, I think this is, we've been wondering for a long time, how can we make downtown Waverly a unique destination? And this certainly would do it. I think, I mean, we, like Rod said, we don't use our river like we should. It's always been seen as scary and flooding and now we've done mitigation to prevent that. I think it's time to capitalize on it. And this project, it looks, it's amazing. I mean, I think it'd be great if we could do it. Have no clue how we're going to pay for it. But I think if there's, it'd be interesting to know what kind of, you know, grant money is there, what percentage, and you don't need to know it tonight, but what percentage of that, you know, could be paid for with that type of grant? But I think it looks amazing so far.
That's where our goal is, getting rid of the unknown. That's why others haven't walked into it, that you haven't done the structural engineering part of it, and that's why partnering with these two makes sense. You have the vision, you also have the expertise to figure out what does it look like? What is it going to take to shore it up? Because other developers come in, they don't have that background to say, well, we have a structural engineer we're going to bring on, see what this wall is going to do. That's why these guys are here. And so I think once we get the unknown figured out, can we go into the water like this? Figure that out. What does the borings tell us about the, whether it's the way we're going to build this or what it does? All that, once it's figured out, but then look at it coming back to say, here's what we know, here's what we now think it'll cost, phase one, phase two. That's where you probably make your more decision. We're hoping to just have them go back and kind of figure out what is that next step now? What is the cost to tiptoe through this, not just rush in with a bunch of money being spent?
I guess what I'll say is, you know, I'll play the past performance, there's no guarantee of future results, right? Thing card, but, you know, I compare this quite often to the project we did in Coroville, very, I mean, same kind of structure, exactly same kind of structure. We were able to do that, show no rise in the flood height. There were endangered mussels in that stream. We were able to overcome that, that issue. The city received $10 million in community development block grants and also economic development administration funds. That's a different time than it is now and as far as funding goes. Right now, public-private partnerships are huge and that's what you'd be bringing with this, with this project is something like that, a public-private partnership. So I think, and then, you know, just the other things for funding, they're out there, rec trails, you know, we're looking at these trail connections and saying that there's a trail connection there. There are just so many things that would align this, you know, for water trails is another one, you know, and the river access. Even though water trails, you know, they like to fund those like, you know, put in takeout spots for boats, but they also want people to just be connected to the river, like you said. So I think there are a lot of funding sources out there and if you get this done, it's going to be likely a combination of those things to make it happen and make it be a success. And that's where we see it going, you know.
So if the next step is to do these, this stability study, engineering study, whatever, do the borings and all of that, how much is that going to cost us and how long is it going to take to get that done so that we can look to see if we want to go on to the next step?
Yeah, so we're working on an amendment to our scope to present to staff, to work through kind of the scope of what that will look like. And so we don't have those numbers just yet, but we're going to share those and hopefully talk about this again and keep, you know, talking about it to get to where that's at. As far as the duration, a study like that could take, I'd say if you got that done this year, I think that would be a good goal, so. And that would be coming with hopefully a real good sense of like, you know, now that we have a path moving forward for that and we're very confident in the, all the issues you questioned, you know, you asked about like the permitting from, you know, endangered species, permitting from flood height, the actual design and foundation of those walls or the cofferdams and all the structural repairs to make this a sound thing. So that's what you get is like a very definite number of those out of that study.
Now, check to my understanding, so these borings would be on the part north of the building, not downstream from her? Do we also need it downstream?
Yeah, we'd probably get some downstream too, yeah. Just because especially, so like even their, on the downstream side, we're thinking that necessarily, we wouldn't necessarily like coffer it with like a wall. We'd just fill in that area, just like place earth and fill. The thing that gives me pause about the idea of that is, again, if you imagine that roof of a cavern that's only three or four feet thick.
Sure. A lot of weight on top of it is a bad idea.
Yeah, 10 feet of soil on top of that. Yeah, I don't want it to all of a sudden sink into a cavern.
Well, I, so I definitely appreciate gaining the kind of the relative understanding of it's the wall north of the turbine room that is a greater cause for concern than a lot of the stuff south of it. Because I was seeing the stuff south and knowing what the problems there were, but this kind of information that it's the north wall is the one that's causing the most concern, it makes sense to me once you say it, but that's kind of the need for that, well, the benefit of that cofferdam up north of it.
Yeah.
Is basically we can kind of fill in soil so we don't have that water pressure on the north side of the building.
Yeah, either fill in soil or just, yeah, build a wall out there. I mean, that's the idea is to, I mean, one option that we've considered is that we would just coffer and then, you know, pour that wall against the wall. There are a lot of, and that's part of this, there are kind of a lot of options here that we need to work through and come up with the one that's, you know, the, going to make the most, you know, cost-effective sense and be reliable, obviously, right?
So, okay, so I'm looking at the, I would call it the cofferdam below the turbine room. Is that going to be high enough that it's always out of the water or is, if the water's high enough, is that going to be underwater? I mean, are we going to get close to the water level? Are you going to have like steps leading down to the water level? So if the water level comes up, that might actually be underwater?
Yeah, so that would, I mean, part of it obviously would be underwater as you're stepping down, right?
Right.
Right now, the 100-year flood height actually kind of goes into that plaza space that's right there. So the 100-year flood, so, you know, it would, doesn't quite get to the building, like floor elevation, but it does inundate that space right south of the building. So no matter what we do, it's going to, you know, in a 100-year flood, that portion's going to be underwater just to be able to connect onto that plaza space that's right there right now.
What about the stuff north of the turbine? Is that something we want to keep out of the floodplain?
Yeah, my vision for that would be that it would be up above the 100-year flood, right? And we can talk, you know, too, at some point about, you know, what level of reliability do you want on that, you know, for, because as we all are knowing now these days that 100-year flood may not be just a once in a hundred year kind of thing anymore.
Probabilities change.
Yeah.
But so, okay, so all the stuff below the turbine room, that's, that needs to be designed to be underwater and not be destroyed when it goes underwater?
Yep, that's the idea. So, yeah, it might, you know, have some like silt deposition or something like that after a flood, but, you know, you power wash it off and go about your business, yeah. Right back to active space.
What kind of timeframe would it take to get a number for that project? I think it's kind of what we're looking at is we're going to wrap up some things tonight, hopefully.
Yeah.
What does that look like from a timing standpoint to get that figure?
I think we have a lot of that kind of figured out right now. We just today had the conversation with our geotech consultant. So we're talking to TerraCon, I guess. They did all the borings for the dam project in 2010, plus a couple of other borings on the building. So they've already got quite a bit of data out there. They don't have any right here though because they've just never had a project in this exact area, right north and south. So need to work with them, get to get a proposal back from them, see what their number is. It's going to be, that part I'm a little more, it could be expensive because just, you can imagine like on the north side, the upstream side, you're talking about floating a barge to be able to get a drill rig in there to drill and get these, right? So just the logistics are expensive. So, but we need to work, if that's the direction council wants to go, then we'll work with them to get a firm number on that. And it could take, you know, a couple of weeks, I would guess, you know, because they would want to come and do some site reconnaissance to see what it's going to take to float a barge out here.
I find myself thinking a lot, some of these things have already been mentioned, but we've talked for years about how we don't use the river as much as we could or should and what a great asset it could be for the community if we would develop it. We also constantly hear from community members that there's not enough to do in town or that, you know, we don't have nice restaurants, we don't have family-friendly things. This would really address a lot of those things and just seeing what it could look and function like is really exciting to me. Obviously, the cost part is huge and that's something that we have to be really, really mindful of. A big question that sort of weighs on me is, okay, let's say they came back and said it's going to cost $2 million to do what the city is willing and wants to do to make it marketable to developers. Then when it comes to that development step, is that something you guys help with or how do we do that so that if we decide to pursue this, if we decide to put out a bunch of money, then how do we work in the best way to make sure that we get developers?
I'm an engineer, so I'll defer that question.
Thanks for your living.
I think maybe two different, two different aspects that I can kind of weigh in at this point. One, that's definitely why we're on the team. We're teaming with Bolton and Mink inside of some of their, you know, site expertise, but really we work with development teams in doing historic tax credit projects, rehabilitating buildings into new uses like this. Probably one of the leaders in the state. So we've done a lot of that. So that started at a starting point. We're kind of being speculative right now though, based on our experiences, what kind of things can help prove out a case for a developer to look at this? to look at this. We're going to give you everything we can with that. But we do have, you know, developer relationships too that we want to introduce, you know, I've mentioned it to a couple people, they're interested in at least checking it out and looking at it. So hopefully, we can bring some relationships, you know, and hopefully, we can be a long-term partner on the site and, you know, transition to a contract with a development team to, to do this. That'd be ideal for everybody to kind of, you know, leverage this work that we're all doing together here and, and help it, you know, find that public partner, public-private partnership and keep the team going. So we're kind of doing, kind of think, I think everything that we kind of can at the moment, but that's, that's why we, we describe ourselves as an ideal partner to play this role.
So what do you think?
Yeah.
I mean, do you think it's doable? Do you think people would be interested? Is it worth the investment for us to do?
I think so, I think so. I think it's a great, I mean, you have, what I heard tonight is that you, you kind of are all on a very similar page about that this could be a place that's a very identifiable place for the town and a place where people come together. So, you know, as long as there's, there's unity to, the only time that I see this kind of like not working out that well is, is when people have very diverse thoughts about where that place could be, and then you start working on 10 sites and then, you know, it really slows you down. Decades, you know? But with that said, you know, this is a really great focus for that. It is the type of building that has been really successful in other communities, you know, Exile Brewing went into a similar brewing, uh, space like this in Des Moines. We were kind of like outside the city center when we looked at that project and we're like, are people really going to gather here? Yes, you know, it turned out to be great. Outdoor space, spill-out space like this too. Uh, there's a restaurant in Either Orr that we did, called Either Orr that we did in the west side, almost to West Des Moines, uh, last year. And it's, um, it's in an old auto shop, like old auto parts store, like, so that doesn't sound like the most opportune place for people to gather and have a great restaurant, but it has these outdoor spaces where kids can play and, and you can have a meal and then there's some, there's a, a room that you can rent. So it is, these kind of things are, you know, definitely like what people want and they're coming around to do. And specifically, at least the Either Orr team, they are continuing to, to build in other communities. They, the brother of, of, in their group, opened up Field Day Brewing in North Liberty last year, kind of a similar concept, new build, but similar concept. So, yeah, I think these are, you know, you're kind of like of the time in that way. I mean, I, I like that everyone's been really open to, to not just say, let's get a cafe, let's get a brewery, because it's, they're, those kind of businesses aren't totally thriving right now, they're struggling. But some of these like restaurants that pair with outdoor space are very like, you know, on the front end and people want to expand and they want to find communities where people really want to make that their place to go and gather. And that's kind of what the business model is about. So great alignment there, let's capitalize on it and try to make it happen.
We don't want to be making the decisions that developers should be making.
Exactly.
So we want someone to come in and, and decide this is a great space.
Right.
We don't want to say, hey, let's build a brewery here and like not have anybody come in.
Exactly, yeah, well said.
But you know, the, the pictures you showed of the exteriors are very versatile, right? And so, yeah, I think it's setting, we need to set the stage for someone to take it over. And I think, you know, we're all, we, we need to be fiscally responsible, obviously. I think you're hearing from us about that tonight, but, but I also think we have to take some risks sometimes, and the only way you're going to have economic development is to take some risks, if they're, what, well-educated risks, so.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm also reminding myself, there's a cost to doing nothing. There's a cost to tearing down this building. And it's important that when we look at the price tag of what this redevelopment would be, we're comparing it to the cost of removing the building or
Well, just letting it sit, right?
Well, if we let it sit eventually, it's going, you know, there's going to be a cost to removing or repairing or whatnot. So, I mean, we need to compare the cost of this project with the cost of removing the building. And, you know, and the loss that would come with removing such a historic building like this.
Well, and I think the loss of not investing in the downtown, right? I mean, I think our downtown has been through a lot since, you know, floods and infrastructure projects and now no bridge. And, and I think we need to, as a city, show that we believe in the downtown and we're willing to be creative and think outside the box and, and get in experts who, who have experience with this so that we're doing it wisely.
Well, I like the idea of creating some kind of gathering space in downtown to encourage people to come downtown.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, because the thing that jumped, has jumped in my mind is looking at this is with the, the kind of reimagining both the parking lot on the north side there and redoing First Street a little bit, is we also have space south of Bremer, along the river, that is city-owned, that we've done the west side of Bremer with Coleman Park, north, the west side of the river, north of Coleman Park and the South Riverside project. We've done some really nice development there for bringing people in. This is our chance to do some stuff on the east side where we typically had businesses, but now we have some more housing. I mean, the human building is housing now. And so to have more community space in the downtown where we've got places to be able to, to do that, or to at least help facilitate some of that. And it could be reimagining First Street a little bit, the whole side on First Street East, both north and south of Bremer Avenue.
I would, I would like to proceed to the next step, frankly. I think that this would be a fantastic space for the city to have, and it's worth us taking a look at, doing something with it. What keeps me up at night is worrying that we redo the building, we put all this money into it, and then we can't find a developer, there is no developer that wants to partner with us, and the building stays empty for 10 years, and I have eggs thrown at my house. So, I mean, if there's a way that we can partner with a developer even earlier in the process than wait until we have the building completely done and say, okay, now who's going to come in and, and occupy it? So I, I think that might be part of the process. But I understand right now that the, the next step is to get those borings done and engineering studies done, so we know exactly where we're at in terms of what investments we need to make into the building for the short term.
Okay, there's no motion on the table, we're not going to be voting tonight, but I'm real curious as to the temperature of the room, and I think staff needs some direction. Is tonight, are you looking and saying hard stop, run away from this? Or are you saying small incremental steps, let's at least find out what the next thing would cost?
That's what I would do.
Could I ask a question?
Not too small, because I don't want it to stagnate.
No.
Just a quick question, um, do you guys also help facilitate finding grant monies and so on, or like pointing the parties in the right direction? Or is that not within your
We know a few from experience, I wouldn't say it's, you know, it's not like a specific scope that we do, but between us and staff, I think we can put together a pretty good list.
Yeah.
Specific historians. We do have in our scope right now to give you a good lay of the path to historic tax credits, which would be a huge piece for this.
Thank you.
And what to keep in mind.
I mean, if I may, I guess my, just to clarify, what would the sunk cost kind of be? Because I do think that like having a third space in the community would be very beneficial, but I guess very bare bones, like reinforcing that north side and then adding more reinforcement to that south side in addition to all the testing, like regardless of like what happens to the building in terms of development, like what's it going to cost the community just to like make sure that there's some sort of structural integrity like in place? I guess would be my question, because it just seems like we can, we can talk all night about how, like what we do with the building, and there's a lot of really good ideas that you've proposed so far, but I guess in terms of just like safety and ensuring that there's some, something in place, like I guess at the very minimal something where like people that are kayaking recreationally have an easier access to get to the other side, just something along those lines where it's like integrity and ease of access, like do you have an estimate of like what that might cost?
So, so I'm a little reluctant to share a cost right now, because of what we've found out through kind of our research is this, this karsttopography that we have really kind of throws a wrench in the works. That's a very non-standard foundation type. And originally, when we were looking at this, we thought, okay, we can just do a sheetpile wall, which, you know, we kind of driven, you know, steel piles that coffer this off. When we were looking at that option, it was kind of between one and a half and $2 million to, to do that, that coffer dam and also the structural repairs to the, the walls. Now, knowing that that probably, you know, the sheetpile is not really an option, because we could go and drive those and then drive them into a cavern, we need to go back and think about it a little bit, so. But I think the other thing is, side of, side of it is that, you know, we didn't explore all of the options that we have ideas for and like what those costs could be. So when we say it could be one and a half to $2 million, it could also be closer to $1 million after we find some other options, right? And so, you know, that's kind of the ballpark we're talking about. And that's, you know, I know it's a huge range, but it could be, you know, a million to 3 million, it's hard to say right now.
But somehow, after we do these borings, we'll have a much better prediction of how, of like what, what, a much smaller ballpark, shall we say?
Yeah, that's the idea. Yeah, we come out with a, I mean, our idea, our attempt would be to come out with a, a design so that you would have a, like a very small ballpark, yeah. I mean, there's no certainty again, and, you know, we don't bid these projects.
And, and what's the approximate cost of just those borings?
So, uh, discussion we had with TerraCon this morning, they were talking about probably $100,000 just to launch a barge and, and do the borings, so.
Exasomobilization is kind of brutal, there's no way to get down there to do it unless you come in from the water and the water is not that deep, so it's going to be interesting to see what that looks like.
Yeah.
Well, there's always, there's good times of year and bad times of year to do it, so. Right now, the, the water's a nice predictable level, but in a couple months, it may not be.
So, and that was, that was there for just the geotech to give us the data to then do our work, so. So I guess those are the ballpark numbers. Again, we need to refine our scope and, and really talk about, you know, what we include in this phase and that kind of thing too, along with, you know, your input.
So when I hear you saying, counsel, let's come back with more data?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you guys.
Let's move on to item two, this is the first reading of ordinance 1160, an ordinance amending the sewer rates, charges and minimum rates for fiscal years 2025 and 2026 and 2026 through 2027. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance 1160, an ordinance amending the sewer rates, charges and minimum rates for fiscal years 2025 through 2026 and 2026 through 2027.
Second. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote, Carla.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
I've lost Jones on the phone. Kengis?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
No.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Unanimously. Item three, first reading of ordinance 1161, an ordinance amending the water rates, charges and minimum rates for fiscal years 2025 through 2026, and again, 2026 to 2027. Can I have a motion?
I will move approval of the first reading of ordinance 1161, an ordinance amending the water rates, charges and minimum rates for fiscal years 2025 through 2026 and 2026 through 2027.
Second.
It's on the table, any discussion? This will be a roll call vote, Carla.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Six to zero. Item four, first reading of ordinance 1162, an ordinance amending the solid waste rates, charges and base rate for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, and again, 2026 through 2027. What's your mood, is there a motion?
Move to approve the first reading of ordinance 1162, an ordinance amending the solid waste rates, charges and base rate for fiscal years 2025 through 2026 and 2026 through 2027.
Second.
It's on the table, any discussion?
So I was looking at this compared to the previous two ordinances, were an increase of approximately 3%. The increase here of 75 cents is actually a 20% increase, so it's much more significant. I mean, going from 350 to 425 is about a 20% increase. Why is it that large? I mean, that, that seems a big jump compared to the other increases.
Well, I think you had to look at it two different ways. If I go to a nickel to a quarter, it's a 500% increase. I don't know, a percent is always the best way to look at this. We try to look at each item and not just do a flat percentage across the board. Some of these have not been done in quite some time. I mean, I'll let Justin confirm a lot of this, but we're trying to get these so that a 90 gallon container doesn't cost the same as a 60, costs the same as a 30. The sheer amount of plastic in it is enough to cause a little bit of difference in pricing. We've not really adjusted any of these in quite some time. Trying to think how long it has been since this has been really adjusted.
2022.
So when you look at that, the adjustments are simple percentages, we've not looked at each individual item to see, is it truly representative of what we're doing? So while the percentage, I know it is higher, that's why we went with the 75 cents, because you put out there a 20% increase, I think it's going to taint some people's issues of what they're looking at, instead of letting them see it's 75 cents per month.
So that's $9 per year?
Yes. And if you look at the percent increases of the other ones, it's quite a bit beyond $9 a year. So we're trying to be relative, so people understand what we're getting, not throwing a consistent number out there, which is going to cause confusion and all of a sudden, we see an article about a 20% increase in this, and then people start to panic when it's 75 cents. So it was trying to be sensitive to what it is versus what the interpretation will be.
Any more discussion? You appear ready to vote? Carla?
Kengis?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
No.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
That passed five to one, thank you. Resolution, uh, item five, resolution 25 to 08, a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Waverly, Iowa and MSA Professional Services Incorporated of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for the Memorial Park Concept Plan Revision and Authorizing the Mayor to Sign the Agreement. Is there a motion?
I would move approval of resolution 2508, resolution approving an agreement between the city of Waverly, Iowa and MSA Professional Services Incorporated of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for the Memorial Park Concept Plan Revision for the amount of $4,800 and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is kind of what I really want to see before trying to move forward, too much more in the park.
Exactly. Yep, since the pool was shifted and stayed in place versus the west side of the park, we're still looking at what that's going to entail. We did have the JEO look at the possibility of doing it, but with them not being the original, it was double this cost, so we were going to go back to the original owners, see if they can do it cheaper. When we walk in, we'll have an idea of where everything should go that we know we're going to put in there, and then kind of look at what might be there, and of course, bring it back to you then. So that's our goal, is to get something in there phased out as well, so we know ballpark, timing, what that's going to cost you going forward.
They're going to use the information that they got from the previous town hall meetings and
Yeah, they'll start with that, and then we'll start shifting things to scale to make it look more where it are today versus what they thought it was going to be at the time.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's just important that we're very clear with them about what we need, because I think we came out of the last plan with maybe not as much detail about certain things as we thought.
It will be crystal clear to them when we meet with them, what we do and don't want.
Any more discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Carla?
Kengis?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Unanimously. Item six, resolution 2509, a resolution awarding the Waverly City Hall Wall Project. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of resolution 25-09, a resolution awarding the Waverly City Hall Wall Project to Stagie Construction Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa for the bid amount of $65,493.
Second. Any discussion?
I'm glad we got a bid.
Yeah, two years. This is the first bid we've gotten, so we're pleased to see it. We had included chambers as well, but with the wiring issues we've had, and the floors, et cetera, the fact that we're in an elevated diase, we didn't know if this will be a bigger project someday to look into what that is. So we pulled it for now and can add it later at some other time, but the cost was a little more than we anticipated to. But like I said, it's the only bid we've had in two years trying to do this, so it wasn't enough to shies away from it. It was just, let's get done what we can get done, which is all the main public areas versus this and the offices. So we're at least going to take this step if you approve it.
And you don't feel that the lack of bids is because that's so hard to say, Waverly City Hall wall?
No, we're not that clever in our naming, but we did what we could to get it representative of what it is. I think the timing and the labor it takes to do this, maybe it's peeled wallpaper off trying to do it at building this size. It's not going to be pleasant possibly, but we hope it'll be worthwhile in the end.
Many a marriage has been lost over wallpaper.
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion? Carla, let's have a roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes. That was unanimous. Item seven, resolution 2510, a resolution approving contract bonds and certificates of insurance and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract with Stagie Construction Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa for the Waverly City Hall Project.
I will move approval of resolution 25-10, a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract with Stagie Construction Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa for the Waverly City Hall Wall Project for the bid amount of $65,493.
Second.
You're on the table. Any discussion?
When do you think this will be done?
Won't you give us kind of start and finish date, Garrett, if you would?
So with the approval, it'll start February 12th, so next week. They'll be working in the Civic Center and the north hallway, and then around March 17th is when they would start in the lobby and the south hallway. They're going to judge how quick it goes over in the Civic Center area, but they're kind of assuming about three weeks for each section, three weeks to a month for each section.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Carla?
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Item eight, resolution 2511, a resolution awarding bid to Phelps Uniform Specialists of Muscatine, Iowa for the City of Waverly Uniform Services. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution 25-11, a resolution awarding bid to Phelps Uniform Specialties, Specialists of Muscatine, Iowa for the City of Waverly Uniform Services for the annual estimated bid amount of $10,368.44.
Second.
Any discussion?
So I thought this was very interesting. I didn't know, I didn't know that, I guess you can turn in your city shirts and get them laundered.
Correct.
Okay.
We prefer they do.
Yeah.
And if they're damaged, they're torn, they replace them, that's kind of what all the contract is, the fees for it. They also do the carpets in the buildings, and then the first aid medical kits as well. So we've been in the city launder for quite some time, and when we went to go out and bid, we had multiple bidders, and this is where we came out. So we'll give them a try and see how it goes.
I'm just surprised that the cheapest bid is so far away. I mean, the distance kind of surprised me, and I assume they know, like, how, where we are.
They're very aware. They had a rep here, they know where we are, they have multiple large locations all over the Midwest. We would be coming out of warehouse, I guess, from Muscatine, but they do have routes here, other businesses in this region, so it's not just us.
I would assume that if they're going to Waterloo, Cedar Falls for business, it wouldn't cost them that much more to make a trip up to Waverly.
Any more discussion? Carla?
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Item nine, resolution 2512, a resolution accepting partial public improvements for Stone Lane in the Stone Meadows subdivision. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve resolution 25-12, a resolution accepting partial public improvements for Stone Lane in the Stone Meadows subdivision.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Can we get some context, like, why is it partial? I mean, to what extent is it finished and not finished?
The items that are not completed yet are the gas and electric infrastructure going into the subdivision for the housing. It's because the ground is frozen.
Okay.
But other than that, it is, street is there, water, sewer, sanitary, that's all done. The detention area, they did not want to do grading in January, talked to the neighbors about that possibility and decided to stay until it got a little bit better weather to work on that. But otherwise, the other items there, that's why it's partial. And Mr. Fitro with Panther Builders is here as well. If you have questions, he's able to answer them for you, but.
I suppose my question is, what is the benefit to approving this, this partial? I mean, what's the motivation of doing it now as opposed to waiting until it's all done?
If you want to speak there, Kevin, maybe it'll help the group here.
Kevin Fitro, Panther Builders. Benefits starting houses.
Okay.
If we don't, we don't get, we can't get a certificate of occupancy, which means if we start houses, we're sitting on house loans for.
Okay, so basically you need us to approve it so you can start building?
Yep.
Yep. So we need to get foundations dug, framing in, and occupancy could be May. Is that kind of the estimate we're looking at?
Yeah, first permits in, we're looking to start digging as soon as we can.
Okay.
So it'd be Mayish.
You know, the biggest concern, of course, would be completion of the rest of the project, but there is a performance bond which is still in effect, so I'm not sure that we're taking a very big risk.
It's not a big risk, sure.
Next bit, completion would be early June.
Early June. We're, at sewer water, everything's in. We're ready to rock and pave as soon as weather allows.
So if we don't approve this, you can't start building?
We would probably choose not to, just because we don't know. If you don't, we go to the end of the subdivision.
Can you come up to the mic?
Oh, wait, sorry. If we don't, we go to the end of the subdivision. If it's, we get a rainy spring and it's July, we're sitting on construction loans, development loans. It's just not financially a wise choice for us.
So this is the optimal time of year to start building is why you want to get it done sooner rather than later?
The other is our tax credit. You know, we're a year, year and a half into it now. We've got to get 40 houses done in a year and a half. So.
Do we need to put signs on the street? You know, for stop signs and?
Yep, yep, they would go in. When does that happen? I guess we accept this. I want to make sure that occurs. Whitekirt's ready to go.
Okay.
Yep.
So if we accept that, are we going to have people driving up and down the street checking out the construction?
Yep.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Oh, Waverly people like to do drive-by visits.
Yeah, we like that.
Well, we've got to here. When are the, I know we've heard from some citizens about backyards that need to be raised, et cetera. When is that going to get fixed?
When we do the detention.
Which is spring or?
It would be right away in the spring, as soon as we can. We took the fences out, we started the work. The December, the early December freeze kind of pushed us off, and we stopped at their request.
You know, just in general, I think it's a good idea to be as accommodating to builders and people who are willing to invest in Waverly as we can be as a council.
I just like to ask questions. I'm nosy that way.
I think it's a good question, right? So it's not typical that we are asked to approve something partial, so I think it's a good question to ask.
That's kind of what we're in the middle of. This is more of a hybrid of where we've been versus where we're going, and it's been difficult to kind of maneuver all that. We've tried to work through all we can, but it's a challenge.
Yes.
Because we're not used to this, we've not seen it this way. Not everybody agrees to it. It's just, it's difficult because it's different. And like I said, this is somewhere where we've been, where we're hoping to get to. Some cities do it the way we do, some don't. In the end, I guess we're going to try and get housing done. I do know there's a lot of dirt debris, straw, et cetera, clogging the drains. So we're going to probably need to get that cleaned out, though, at least the storms. So we're not flooding that or backing that up. We were out there today, adjusting the center photo. It's, we got to make sure it's cleaned.
Yep. No, if we put a punch list together, we can, yeah, we can do it while the crews are coming in.
Okay.
Yep.
So is there really any risk? I mean, they, we have insurance, basically, that will protect the city.
Right.
I think it's important to make it really clear to the public that there is that performance bond that decreases our risk, and that this project is unlike other ones that have been done in town because you do have that really tight timeframe in order to get the tax credits.
Correct.
Yep.
And I like to think that's pretty good leverage on everybody's part, that it will get done in a timely manner.
And the maintenance, you know, guarantee is for four years, so if we find something, you're still on the hook to fix it, so.
That'll be four years when the entire project is done, infrastructure-wise, not when the street is finished, when that whole project is done. So it'll be probably from June, somewhere in there.
Okay.
Counsel, are you ready to vote?
Yep.
Carla?
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Item 10, approval of mayoral appointments. May I have a motion?
Move to approve the following mayoral appointments. Stephanie Ross and Linda Abkamire is reappointed to the Human Equity and Diversity Commission for terms ending February 15th, 2027. Libby Fry will be appointed to the Human Equity and Diversity Commission to fill a vacancy for the term ending February 15th, 2027. Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. Item 11, continuation of the January 25, 2025 fiscal year 2025-26 proposed city budget with possible actions for specific items to remain or be added to the budget. You had this presented to you for eight hours a week ago. Let me remind you that the budget can go down, but can't go up after that hearing.
Your hearing.
Yeah.
We need to try and get Brett back on for this. I know he was kind of going to be a part of this whole thing.
He said he can't hear.
Okay.
Shoot.
That's too bad.
All right.
James?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things we just need to finalize and wrap up. I guess first question would be based on the budget as it sits today without our projects being figured out. Are there items you want to bring up, briefs, discuss, look at, talk about, based on our eight-hour session Saturday, or the things we want to revisit, or redo, or kind of go back through? I guess probably the starting point.
Well, the two items that I mentioned, the first one is raising 7th Street, 7th Avenue, southwest, where the flood comes over the road, the water comes over the road.
Do you mind if we bring that up when we get to projects?
I thought we were doing that.
Well, I want to go back to see if there's anything from Saturday that you've sat and thought about.
Ah, okay.
That's already extended to.
I just had two small things, and we talked about this a little bit during the meeting, but the senior center had actually wanted to request 12,000, and Cindy hit the wrong key and asked for 10, so I wondered, asked for consideration of giving them 12,000. The other thing I was considering was, after we heard from Heritage Days about the difficulty they're having with fundraising, of whether we could raise our contribution to them to 10,000, which would cover the fireworks in total from 6,000. So those were the two things I'd like the council to consider.
If we cover the fireworks in total, does that create an issue with the bottle collection at Fairway? Says that this money will be spent on fireworks.
Yeah, we could, well, we could designate it toward a different part of Heritage Days, like music, or they could change their signage at the fairway.
Can we just throw it into their general budget, let them worry about it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, and that was from how much to how much?
I think they requested 6,000. Like to propose 10,000, and then 12,000 for the senior center instead of the 10,000 that they requested.
Okay, any discussion on those two items for us?
Well, I know we had talked about the senior center, so that, I think we're all on board with that, but.
I'm, I'm, it's 4,000, but I have concerns about how much getting the city involved in one activity versus a number of other activities that go on in town as well, that either don't have city funding or minimal of any.
6,000, 10,000 is a big jump.
That's a big jump. And we're already putting six into that, and we've got, there are other activities that go on that don't have anywhere near that kind of even the six.
Though we do give significant logistical support to the art walk and Oktoberfest.
We do, but, but we do that with Heritage Days as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. I will say, you know, I think Heritage Day is, almost everything there is free, you know, for people to do except drink beer, basically. So.
I suppose I, could we settle on 8,000? I mean.
I think they'd appreciate any contribution we can give, yeah. I think the prices.
I would be in favor of increasing it. I don't know if I want to increase it all the way to 10,000.
Well, and we talked about, we talked about the human equity.
Right, that's a contribution.
Taking that back from their request.
Yeah.
I guess I'd have to agree with Tim. I'm a little concerned about jumping from 6,000 or 10,000, that we're setting a precedent that may be very difficult to back off of in the future. I don't, I don't want them to become dependent on city contributions to their organization for them to be able to run the festival. I mean, it is a citizen-run festival, not a city. Although 10,000 is not a huge part of their budget, I understand that. But I would agree, I, I think that an increase is certainly understandable. I'm not sure. I was thinking 7,500, but $500 one way or another is not going to be a big deal. So I think, and I don't believe, I mean, I'd have to, I don't recall if we have increased that amount at all for a number of years, if that has been.
Quite a time.
I don't think so. I have to look there.
You know, costs for them have increased and everything else.
I don't think they have any intention of getting, becoming dependent on us. I just think that expenses are going up. You know, they said they spent about $90,000 last year. And they are trying to, I think, revamp their fundraising to local businesses and private citizens, and so I think that's a work in progress.
Well, I'd be okay raising it to 8,000.
Well, let's take the temperature of the room. Do we have a consensus on senior center from 10,000 to 12, and Heritage Days from 6,000 to 8,000?
I would say yes.
Yeah, I always assumed the senior center was 12.
Okay, we'll call that a consensus.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything else from Saturday's event before we get to the projects? Because it's going to take a while, I'm afraid to tell you. The project part that I put out there for you guys to rate net did not go well. I can't make heads or tails out of what you turned back into me, honestly. I have no clue what to do with it. So you're going to have to go from scratch and start over, because I've got projects we didn't have on there, I've got stuff rated we can't even do. It was just, it's all over the place. So we're going to start over. I'd sent some information out to you earlier about where we currently sit, from a tax impact to, you know, the impact of the pool. And the reason for the pool is, I'm obviously in favor of it, but I've had a number of people ask, what's the real number this year? Because when we put out the articles for the vote, it was a certain dollar amount, worst-case scenario, and that is not the case now, obviously. Year six is what we'd always told was the worst-case scenario. It was like $95.11, something like that. It's actually a $37 impact per 100,000 of residential. So without the pool, we lowered taxes $12, 100,000. With it, it's up 25 as of current state. So there was a few ways to look at this. You can look at that total as a whole. Was it increased with the pool, et cetera? Or you can look at it as the pool was a given. What would you do if it wasn't there? You know, there's a lot to talk about. We don't want to raise taxes, and I get that. The pool raised it, so we already there. That's just the way it sits, and we knew that was going to happen, obviously. If the pool wasn't in play, you could still do almost $1 million in projects and still be a few dollars per 100,000 less tax-wise than the year before. So it's really, how do you want to, what mindset do you want to use to go forward with projects? You can do all of them, you can do none of them. I don't think staff has any passion about adding more projects on or taking on less. It's just your decision. And so I don't know how you want to proceed going forward. We kind of walked through what we had as options, and again, trying to get a consensus. Is it in, is it out?
For the sake of the people at home, can we just very briefly go through the projects that are on the table?
Sure. I think we need to go through them one by one to kind of figure out where everything's at here.
Absolutely.
Here. No. If they're not paying attention, that's their fault. We've done enough projector work tonight. The only thing included right now is the pool, and we have a golf court, golf course equipment purchase, which is actually coming from your general fund, and it's the same as it's been for years and years and years. So that's the only thing that's in there currently. One of the larger projects that we were looking at is the paving of 39th Street Northeast. That's out by the fairgrounds. That's from the Highway 3 to the city limits. The other project that we had was the leisure services headquarters at parking lot out there. We've revamped all the buildings, we've gone through multiple phases. This is the final piece to finish that project, as it is gravel, and it's not going to be gravel. It is washing away. It's in terrible shape. 10th Avenue Southwest, we were looking at doing full-depth concrete patching out there. I don't know if you want me to list the dollar estimates to you. I can do that if you'd like. you like.
Yeah.
39th is about 1.5 million, about a, not quite 100, that's mostly engineering. The headquarters parking lot, we have it about 235, so we're thinking that'll run. It's about 300 for 10th Avenue Southwest. The water and sewer for Heinz Edition, we have it at about 2 million. That's not property tax funded, that would be from state revolving fund, so SRF funding instead. That really will not impact your overall tax situation here. The engineering, we have covered through remaining bond proceeds from one of the other projects we did last year, so the engineering is already covered for that. You've already heard from Bolton Mink and Slingshot about stabilizing the walls and repairing the concrete. Obviously, we don't have a number for that. I don't know how long it'll take, we're kind of, I don't know if you're going to get one in time to decide this year. I mean, you can put a placeholder in if you want, I don't know what that would even be, but it would have to be a bit of a chunk to make sure we had enough to cover. That's up for you to decide how you want to do that. The two last rail bridges are a million dollars, Ivanhoe and Interurban. We're looking to wait on the report study from WHGS about how, if there's any weight restrictions to those bridges before we're going to move forward, but again, that's completely up to you. Kids Kingdom Playground, we have it at about 1,505, I think that could easily approach 2 million. You're going to pay as much to get the base figured out as you will the actual equipment on it. And we're looking at that another year out, because I do think there's fundraising opportunities for that one. I think we have to get the plan figured out for the overall park, what shape size that is, where does it fit in, everything. So that's kind of why we pushed that. Cemetery Road Construction, we are going to get the engineering done this year, that's already factored in. So depending if you want to add the roads on top of it, it'd have to be later in the year, once engineering's finished. That's 200,000. The boat ramp and parking lot out of Waverly Utilities. The boat ramp is, is good size, it's going to be about 300 for all of it, we hope, that's with the asphalt parking. We would double it with the leave services parking lot, put them both out together, try and get economy of scale on that. The Gulf Storage Building, it's 1.3 million roughly. That is referendum. If we don't have additional funding in place to take that below 934,570, since that's what the state now dictates, we can borrow without a referendum. Or actually 930, because you can only do it in 5,000 increments. So nice job, state legislature. Storage Building is about 300, that's the one that's next to the maintenance building. These would both go on the west side of Memorial Park if we move them from their current location, which is something we would be considered doing, depending on how the hospital comes, if they're looking at that property as well. And then Rod had mentioned possibly raising 7th Southeast for flood control purposes. I don't have a price on that, I don't have an engineering necessarily. We have talked to Bolton Mink about what it would take to, not so much raise the road, that was done years ago, people had concerns about backing up water, and it was actually lowered again. I don't know if that's the answer or not, I don't know what the answer is. I don't know that putting earthen berms up was another option that was thrown out a few years ago, and sandbagging across roads and that. We've tried to figure out, what is an access point if we're flooding that keeps that open, period? Up to a certain footage. So we have a proposal hopefully coming, it'd be about 90,000 to do the hydrology, the engineering, the surveying, everything to get that figured out, what it would look like in that area, what our best solution is. Because a lot of the items that were pitched didn't have hydrology behind them. It was just, well, this looks like it'll work, this is this height, this is that height, it should be fine. We don't really know what that's going to do until you start looking at water flow, whether it's increasing culvers. Because the one thing that I think we brag so much about is how we did Dry Run Creek, we didn't create culvers, didn't create earthen levees. You expanded what the natural flow already was. That's the same process we're kind of wanting to look at here. Water wants to get to where it's going to get, let's stop impeding it and help it get there quicker. And what does that look like? And that's kind of where that's going to go. But that's something we would add into CIP, and I've talked about, see if it'll take it. The fund's getting pressured right now pretty hard, but if it will take it, then we would have Bolton start to work on hydrology, engineering, et cetera. So I'm not disagreeing with possibly raising 77th, Rod, but I'd want to do a study to make sure that is the actual best solution and what it's going to do possibly if it does get raised.
And you said, I'm sorry, what dollar amount did you put on that?
It's 90 for the hydrology, the surveying, the preliminary post, all that.
Okay.
And we just got that this afternoon. We've been discussing it off and on, different firms that do it, we wanted to go with a newer firm, fresh set of eyes, what are they seeing versus this is just an extension of what we've already seen? So I want to really confirm this is what we believe it to be. I know Rod had brought another item up, the Phase 3 Riverside Park, finishing that. I don't know what that cost is going to be, I don't know, we'd have to architect engineer something like that to get that down to the river again. So that's my only issue, is I don't know what number I'd plug in to do it. And if we're going to go out to the market, what does that look like? How much would it be? And I, I have no idea. I can't make that decision right now.
Were there numbers attached originally?
Six, seven years ago.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what that would look like.
That whole plan has to be redrawn because of the new bridge.
I'd feel good if it was done that way, instead of let's just run forward with what we thought we had.
Sure.
And we may want to move it too, based on the new bridge that's come in and the abutments that are there, they're wider now. Do we shift it, do we not shift it? Because that was back with the old bridge, and again, that was pre-COVID. You're talking 2018?
Yeah.
17, 18? And so once that's back, I think it's a good time to look at, what does that look like? So maybe it's a 26, it's maybe more likely a 27, we need some ideas on it, but I do think it's something we need to keep our mind, not forget that. So that's, that's the list of projects we had in front of us. And then a couple extra we've kind of looked at to try and figure out too. So we've given you figures before about what a half million looks like to levy, and what it looks like for a million dollars to levy. From a tax standpoint, that million dollars moved the tax to about 10 bucks per 100,000. That's what it did to the taxes that are owed per 100,000 residential. I did not get into a commercial industrial one, ag on that, but that's what it looks like for a residential. So for me, that's, that's where I sit. It's kind of up to where you guys want to go. I don't know if you want to walk one to one, have a vote, consensus, vote, whatever it might be. It's up to you guys how you want to do this.
So for me, I would immediately, as far as my opinion, I would take Kids Kingdom and the Gulf maintenance building stuff off the table for this budget until we have the park plan more finalized to know what we're doing with those.
I agree.
I don't think there's any reason to even think about planning with those.
Is there consensus on delaying those out for a year at least until we get something there?
Yeah.
Look at that, progress being made. There we go, three up.
Well, I would, I would say similar things about the Seventh Avenue and the South Riverside Park add-ons. Those are things I think are important to keep on the radar, but I don't think they're for next, I don't think we're ready to do them next year.
Do you want the study, the hydrology study done for Southeast? To figure out what the project would be going forward?
From the 90,000?
How would we pay for that?
I'd come out of CIP, we have to look and see if it'll take it, I think it will, but it's getting tight.
Is there anything else that needs to go in CIP?
Well, it depends on what else you want to do. Right now, we don't have a lot in there. We have a couple of small projects that are one-time offers, like concrete replacement, tuck pointing. We have the housing, instead of we're trying to maintain going forward, that's the biggest one. You have the wayfinding sign that's going to be dismantled, eliminated by Titan cutting their hill down. So that's pretty much what's in there now, if you look at the capital line. So it would be the other 90 going in there.
I thought we had already done a hydrology study on that, but I'm apparently mistaken.
Well, I don't know, we'd have to find that, I'm not sure.
Three, four years ago, I looked through my notes and see ones, but I thought we had. But at any rate, I, I would like to see at a minimum hydrology study done so we can see what we're looking at, because I've had a lot of people who have asked me about when something's going to be done with that.
Sure.
And if we have a study that's done, and they say there's nothing that can be done, or it's going to make things worse if we do something, I want to know that as quickly as possible so I can tell those people that. Doesn't necessarily mean we have to do any project on it right away, but at least it'll give us an idea of what we need to do.
Well, we'll research it and see if there was one done three, four years ago, I just don't remember it. If it is, then we'll pass it to Bolton, see if that changes their structure, their scope, and if it lessens it, we absolutely will.
Nice to hear that.
Worst case would be.
Yeah, my, my notes are all so well organized and piles all over the place on my floor.
I have no doubt your recollection.
And I'll try to mine something there and find that. Other than that, I, I think one project that I think should be gone ahead with is the leisure services parking lot. I think that if we can't do that, since we have all of the leisure services buildings done now, and the parking lot is not in very good shape, let's get the parking lot done, and we're done with that project and can cross it off. I think that would be something we can do, it's not terribly expensive.
I can support that.
10th Avenue redoing the concrete, that obviously isn't going to get done until the bridge reopens because there's so much traffic on it.
And that can be pushed till 27, it can be just a month later, June to July, that's the fun time, because June is this year, July's next year. It's hard to know. The one thing I will say as we go forward is, while I don't have any issue with any of the projects we have, there's not all the projects we're looking at. We're still looking at the clubhouse renovating that, what does that look like, trying to get a plan figured out. We can push off, but at some point, these will come to where you don't have a choice.
Yeah.
I'd like to at least control some of the narrative of when we do this versus now you're forced to do it. So keep in mind, this will not be all of it in the next five years, other things are going to pop up, they're going to have to be done. So again, I have no problem doing it, not doing it, it's just this will not be it, as you know, going forward.
The two big buck ones that you listed as far as the million, million plus were the trail bridges and 39th Street.
Right.
The northeast addition with the revolving fund, that's basically a wash, so that's not a.
It's not a taxation.
That one, I think, is a, a go as far as I'm concerned for the project to connect that subdivision.
Is there consensus on that? Or check these off, sort of through?
I agree.
Look, no SRF route on that, try and get that done.
Between the two, between 39th Street and the trail bridges, I would say do the, get the trail bridges done so that we at least have that, that part of the trail finalized, that that's open and usable by people, even if we're still not dealing with the big bridge here yet, but we're getting all of those trail bridges are taken care of and we're in shape there.
Are you saying that on condition of the study saying they need to be replaced? Or replace whether we need.
Weight restrictions is what it is.
Whatever the, what, the weight restrictions are as far as what they come back with, I would, I would, I would be for that. I think 39th Street is a good idea to get done, but since we don't know where the county is with what they're doing, and the fair still hasn't actually operated there yet, so it may, I mean, I think we can delay that a year to see how things go out there.
Well, I thought the county posted something about it's on their plan for 2030 or something.
I think it's sitting in fiscal year 30 is the last concern.
So, I mean, it's something we'll want to get done before then. I understand the argument that prices only go up, so the sooner we do it, the cheaper it is, but I also don't mind, you know, waiting until we're a little closer to the county doing their share.
We have, yeah, and we have to make decisions, balance what we're going to do, that's why I say between the two, I would be looking at doing the trail bridges and having, again, those checked off, and that trail essentially done and open, other than the big bridge here, which is just one.
I would actually do it the other way. I think that unless the bridge inspection says that it's not safe to keep those bridges, I would wait so that people could actually use the bike trail.
For a year.
For a year before we close it again. And I think it would be nice to have, I don't think we should wait necessarily for the county to do that 39th Street, I think it gets more traffic than we actually realize.
Well, I think if we're looking at 28 or 29, if they're looking at 30.
You know, the fair's going to be out there.
It is.
You know, and I think it'd be nice for them to have a decent road to have their access points onto. So I, I would favor going ahead with that. I think back to the whole paving issue of the leisure services.
So I need to check off these one at a time, we're covering a whole bunch of them.
Oh, yes, sorry. I was just going to talk about the other.
Let's try this. Friends, can I get a consensus?
So on the hydrology study for Southeast, is that in, is that out? And we can take a vote if we have to.
I'd be in.
I'd say yes, that's fine.
I'd say in.
Just go around the table, in.
That's fine.
Can I make just a comment?
Sure.
Before you start tabulating?
Say anything you want.
As you were going through them, I was kind of trying to find a pattern that would be workable. And what strikes me is that 25, 26, particularly because we are taking on the pool, that's a big deal for everybody. It strikes me that this could be a good year for us to do studies and to find out what is the urgency of each of these projects and how much will they cost? So as you were talking, the ones that need studies, if I got this correctly, would be engineering, no, sorry, raising the Seventh Avenue Southeast. The hydrology study, or, I'm sorry, raising this.
That's the hydrology.
Sorry, I'm stammering.
It's okay.
This hydrology study on Seventh Avenue Southeast. Find out what we talked about early on with the water building.
Yeah.
What's that going to cost? Find out what is the inspection status on the rail trail bridges? And then engineering on 39th Street Northeast. Those are the ones that I kind of put into the bucket of, these would get us prepared to take the projects on the next year or in subsequent years. I do think we should go ahead and do the leisure services parking lot and the utilities boat ramp if those can be lumped together for economies of scale.
Okay, now we're down another tangent. So we're going to go back, we're going to get these locked out one at a time. So I have a yes on the hydrology.
Yes.
That's what I understand.
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to do that one. Let's just knock somebody out. So Ivanhoe and Interurban, we will not have the report back in time for you to make a decision to do this or not do this. That's the downside of this project, we, we just won't have it down. I mean, timing wise, Justin, what are you thinking for?
Stone, usually it's March timeframe.
So we're going to have to have this locked down because of the state, the publication issues and everything. You can put it in, then you can later take it out, but the other side of it is, once we do a pre-levee hearing, that locks in your first payment no matter what you do. And so it's either you have a big payment or you have a little payment, but that's the first payment, and you can't change that once we get to that point.
I like Julie telling you that we're, that we can let it be a steady year and then come back to it next year. I know the bicyclists would love a year where they can actually get all the way to Redland.
Yeah, good.
Is there a chance that the inspection could come back and say you have to close the trail or build the bridge?
Well, I don't think there's anything like that. It's going to be weight restrictions.
Yeah, I mean.
There were none the last one.
So there's not a huge risk in waiting?
Yeah. The, the biggest risk is that they'll say you can't drive maintenance trucks over this road.
Right.
But you'll have to find another way to get to that part of the trail.
That's, it would deteriorate to that first, and then it would be a few more sessions where we get to where you have to close it completely, so.
Okay, thank you.
So are we going, okay, holding off on?
Yep.
Trail bridges until we get the reports back, maybe next year we get them?
Yep.
Okay.
Let's get that out of here. 10th Avenue Southwest, that concrete patchwork, that's that full-depth patch, I can't recall, so we were looking at 26, could be 27. What are we feeling?
I would delay it. I would delay it. I think the bridge ought to be opened and all will be done so that traffic goes back to normal.
Well, we don't know when we get control back.
Right.
They have to get control back to us, so, okay. Can we get this waiting? We'll cross that off. We're making progress now. I'm almost out of coffee, so we have to go home. Let's jump a little one then. Cemetery Road Construction, we are doing the engineering this year. I don't know if they're vital in twenty-six, Garrett, would you say?
No, I wouldn't do them in twenty-six personally.
Garrett doesn't want to do them.
I'm just saying, we're probably looking at about three years before we would be opening any new sections of the cemetery.
Okay.
That is when we will need the roads.
So we can push that for a year if you want to consider. I think getting the engineering done as we kind of started to say is probably vital, so we'll take that off. Okay, so we are down to just a couple of them here. We'll make it through as yet. The, let's just jump to Thirty-Ninth. Let's just rip this bandit off. So where do you want to be is the question on it. It's about a million five, eighty-five thousand, that is engineering. Do you want to do it all? Do you want to engineer it only? It's, do you not want to do it? That's what you're going to have to figure out. This may take a vote.
I'd be willing to do the, to Julie's recommendation.
It has to bond. It has to be a bond. The engineering, we would look at whether we borrowed or, again, if we have other funding source. Because some of what we've already tried to do, and we'll bring it back to you with reimbursement resolution or reallocation resolution, excuse me, getting my Rs screwed up. So we have bond proceeds from prior bonds, and you need to pay down the debt with them or do a project with them that's qualified. If it's not qualified, you do a reallocation resolution. We did one a year ago or so, and then you can reallocate those bonds to an eligible project. What we currently have funded is the engineering for the lift station. That's coming out of the water portion of it, and we're going to reallocate that to sewer. The engineering for the water and sewer for Heinz Edition, that's also covering that, and then maybe some smaller projects we'll look at. The other portion that we have covered is the musco lighting and the trail connection for the bridge out here. That was one of the big ones we did first. And we have a big chunk in IT, so we don't have to throw this out in the parking lot. It keeps kicking off every three minutes. We have switches and servers and things that have never been replaced in time, that we need to get those taken care of. It's hindering our process. We can't function sometimes with that. So that's the other IT. We do have engineering factored into that, just in case for Thirty-Ninth. It's a possibility. If we borrowed it, we would use that to offset airport whenever that gets figured out, or we can do that later, but those are the things that we will bring to you to confirm through a reallocation of debt to do those items. Two of the three, obviously, you've already talked about, the engineering for Heinz and the musco lighting, et cetera. The third one is the engineering for Thirty-Ninth. If we're going to do the project, we put it in the bond. If you're not going to do the project, we'll do the engineering. We may be able to cover that. It's just six oh one, how do you want to do it? We'll get you a plan and the best way to fund it based on what we're seeing. You just got to figure out, what do you want to do?
I don't want to do the project. I don't want to do the project, but I'd be willing to do the engineering on it. I prefer not to do either, but I'll compromise.
I'm behind the engineering.
Yeah.
Do the engineering.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so engineering, no project. Hang on. Okay. All right, so we will kill the project engineering. All right, but the one thing left in is the utilities boat ramp parking lot. And we are going to try and get some grant work for that. I know we've been very successful getting some of that done. Timing wise, you know, we will have so much time to spend bond money as we always do, except for port at Feds, but it's a matter of do you want to do this one or not? It's not vital, but it was a nice to do if we had room for it.
Is there danger that if we do it, that we'll miss out on grant money? I mean, if we move too fast?
No. Like I said, you have time to react to this. We can look and see what the deadlines are for the various grants that are out there. It doesn't have to be spent in six months. It could be a year and then some, so it's a matter of application. If the grant money isn't there, I think this is the amount, worst case scenario, that still gets it done. We would offset this, we'll double check our figures. We would offset this with the grant funding if it comes through. So this would be, if we had to do it without it, we would, but if we can get it, we will.
Does Waverly Utilities, can they share part of this cost?
I don't think it's theirs.
It's not theirs?
This is part of our park. What's the park called out there?
Three Rivers Duck Pond.
Oh, right.
There you go.
I mean, it gets quite a bit of use. And apparently, the boat ramp is like impossible to use.
It's, it's got some challenges with the river being a lot lower, giving it back in further, wheels are dropping in a little more than it used to. I think there is a challenge there. They're not free by any means. This is three hundred grand to get some done and hoping the asphalt's covered with some of that too, but that's about the last project that we have to discuss, so...
If we're not going to do any other project, I'd say go ahead and do it.
I would, especially if you could pair it with the leisure services parking lot.
I mean, it's going to all be asphalt. It's a quantity issue there.
I would be in favor of it.
I'd be good with that.
My only consideration was trying to make it ADA, if that would be possible to do this year.
We absolutely will do that. That's something we talked about earlier. We will absolutely do that. It's one of the few that would be, and we would make that ADA as we go forward with it. Okay, so if we go with that route, then... Oh, sorry, three, four, five. Yeah, in theory, without the pool, you're still lowering taxes by a bit, actually. It's not that big a bond in the end result here. Last thing is water building then. Since we don't know a number, do you want to plug or you just want to pass? And I have no idea what that number would be, so I can't even really ask you to, in good conscience, give me one. I don't know, again, that's why I asked timing, Adrian. I mean, is it in, end of the week? Is it possible to know a number, ballpark? Can you give me a ten thousand to eighty thousand, a hundred thousand number?
Yeah.
So if I can get a number by the end of the week, I can send it out to you. Of course, I can't act on it, because that's not legal, but I can't bring it to you to side discuss this, but is there a threshold you're comfortable with? If it gets below that, not to exceed, then we can move forward. If it's above it, we don't. I don't know if that's a fair way to put it.
So you're talking about this is the borings that...
It's getting everything figured out that we want to move forward if it can get figured out.
Right. And if we don't do that, it's going to push everything off.
It's a good year. Yeah, it's at least a year.
Well, we talked about a barge being about a hundred thousand to get out to do the boring.
Boring can be another...
Just throwing the number out there, just a hundred thousand, just to get the G-Tech data.
Yeah.
So if we did not to exceed two hundred thousand, would we be in the ballpark?
I think so.
I think you're going to be late, because you still have your work to get done. That's assuming the barge goes well, plus the boring. I'd say it's going to be two fifty to three.
Yeah.
And again, we get a lot closer with it. I don't like to go in speculating, but if it's something we want to get done, you can have it not to exceed. And again, we're not going to issue the bonds for a while yet. We can still back down some of this.
Why would I say not to exceed three hundred then?
I would not think it's going to be more than that. Is that fair?
I think that's pretty fair.
Because again, I don't want to miss out on that, but I also don't want to spend any more money after.
Yeah.
And that's where, if we can get that, then that gets that moving at least, and we don't lose that project. So what would that put us at? Put you at about eight thirty-five then, so you're still under what would be technically lowering taxes if not for the pool, which is kind of the route we were trying to look at.
Yeah. Of course, everybody's going to look at the actual dollar amount when they get their tax statement.
Sure they will. They can remember how wonderful that pool vote was that they made, so... And if they didn't, you've got every right to complain, right about this, but you're still within that window. And again, you can't just freeze and not do anything, but this is not going to stop.
It'd be nice to tell people that, hey, your taxes actually went down, except for the pool.
Yeah, except for the pool.
And they voted to raise. Which they voted to raise.
And we've already done the math on it, and the levy would have dropped to sixteen sixty-eight from seventeen eleven.
Yeah.
That's what it looks like. I mean, those are the numbers.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
I know we're not, we need to be careful not to count our chickens before they hatch, but I think it's also important for us to remember that by the end of this year, we're going to have forty new homes in town.
End of next year.
Sorry, next year.
That's okay. Say this year, holy crap.
Not trying to wish time away. So if we're prepared to do projects and we are, we are doing things to bring people to Waverly, I think we're setting ourselves up well to provide the kind of lifestyle and amenities that the people who are going to come to Waverly need, and we'll be prepared to take those projects on once that tax base increases.
Well, you've got a lot of studies, engineering going in, which is what you mentioned you wanted to do. So this is just the actual hard projects. Now you have a bunch of other studies that'll set you up for future projects. We had an exceptional year for growth. We've not had this in the past. We had one big year. Next year, we'll have some. I'll work with Conde, kind of feel like what that looks like. It's basically everything has of January one and twenty-five. That's when the lines are on. We'll have an idea, but it will not be this again going forward. It will be a little harder, and then fiscal twenty-eight's going to be harder yet, then twenty-nine's when the state takes your hundred thousand right off the bat. It's gone for the levies that we did have and do not have anymore. So the next few years will be critical. Whether or not all this can get done, I have no idea, but this will be the better of the three years coming, most likely, if you're going to make a move and do some of this work. At least, that's what I'm seeing on the horizon, so...
And the next council will thank us for having found this one.
Exactly.
So they know what needs to be done and not done. Can we just compare notes, just to make sure we've got this right? I've got, we're going to do the pool, the golf equipment. Garrett's parking lot.
Yes.
A boat ramp.
Correct.
Seventh Street would be a hydrology study.
Correct.
Engineering out on the highway.
Yes.
Three hundred thousand not to exceed for the water.
Correct.
Building, and then the Heinz Edition.
The SRF fund for that.
Yeah.
So... That's a lot of stuff, and it's not that much overall.
Is it enough to keep Justin busy?
I don't know. Maybe find something else, I guess.
Yeah. Maybe some pickleball courts, maybe.
Oh, no. Yeah, I think that's plenty. I think it gives us an idea what to move forward with. We'll talk to Allers and Spear and start getting that working as far as bonds, et cetera, what the notes look like. We'll get a much better estimate on cost of issuance, because that was the thing I wasn't going to bring up. So if you didn't do anything beyond the pool, you'd have to net out the pool for the issuance cost, which is probably going to be a hundred grand with the bonds in it, because the max is what the max is. I can't borrow more than the max. You'd have to eat the issuance cost out of some other fund to reduce it out of the bonds at the pool. That's just the way it works. So they can be passed on to different projects now and be spread across that instead, so it actually lessens the impact that you would have seen for trying to do the pool project. But I didn't want to then bring that up to you initially to try and influence you in this. It was just, I'm glad we're doing something else, just because...
Wouldn't have influenced me anyway, because I did understand it, so...
Well, fair enough.
Is everybody good? We've reached a consensus? We are ready to move on?
So we'll take this to hearing. We'll get a prep to go to hearing and start the multiple publications and everything else that's going to be required and kind of go from there. All right, so that wasn't so bad, was it?
Item I, reports from boards and commissions. You have six in front of you. Any questions or comments? Item J, staff updates. James?
We got nothing tonight, sir. I think we're all wore out.
That's just not fair. We had two meetings under a half hour. I mean...
We're making up for it now.
Yeah, we are.
There's six more weeks of budget here.
Councilperson Barrigan, what do you got to say?
At the January twenty-seventh city council meeting, there was a presentation by the